Well, it's six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order if Shad Faulkner can lead us in prayer.
Father, we thank you for another day that you've given us. Lord, before we'd ever asked anything, we got to ask you, Lord, that you forgive us, God, for many sins, Lord, those sins that we have committed and, Lord, when we have done, not done what you have asked us to do. Lord, we're thankful, God, for your mercy. We're thankful for your grace. We're thankful for your love and, Lord, that you are mindful of us. We're thankful, God, for each and every one who is out, Lord, in your presence. I pray, God, your blessings upon each and every one. And, Lord, I pray for their needs. Lord, you know them down to an individual and what they stand in need of. Lord, I thank you, God, for their concern about the things that's going on in the community. God, I ask that you would be with the ones that's going to carry out the business here tonight. And, Father, we ask for your wisdom. God, as we go into this hour, and, God, we ask that your will be done in each and every one of these situations. You know what needs to be done. And, Father, Father, we're looking, God, for your guidance and all those things. Lord, God, once again, we thank you. We ask you, God, that you lead, guide, direct us and forgive us again for all of our many sins. And all these things, we ask in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Everyone, please join us in the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under item four, considering the agenda for adoption, we do it under administration, Phil?
Oh, yeah, we could do it under administration.
Need to add an item four under administration for the arena at the fairgrounds. And then Kevin, on one old business that we need to strike to talk about the lease in executive.
If you want to do it in executive session, yes, sir.
Then we also need to strike item one, the Brandon Hurd House lease agreement, to discuss in executive session. Have a motion. We approve the agenda with those changes.
Your motion, Mr. General.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh. Item five, consider to adopt the meeting minutes for the regular council meeting on April 17th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh. Item B, executive session meeting on April 17th, 2018.
So moved.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh. Item six, there is none. Item seven, old business, administration. Number two, vape ordinance.
Yes, sir. Mayor, thank you. It was presented back, I think it was back to March work session for the council to consider the county's vape shop ordinance. These are shops, places that are not only just dedicated to selling alternative tobacco, paraphernalia, things that could be used for the ingestion of illegal drugs. These could be even gas stations. You know, like gas stations will have this kind of stuff in them as well. Anybody that's going to be selling those sorts of items that could be, you call it a permanent tobacco paraphernalia, that could be selling those types of things will fall under the regulation for this. What we have done is set up a licensing system where we're looking for background checks on these folks. They don't have any kind of drug trafficking or drug trade violations in the past. And it also will move these kinds of items out of the front. Right now, the way we're set up, you could walk into a property that has these sorts of things and they could be displayed in the window, they could be displayed in the counter cage or something like that. This will require these types of things to be moved out of the public view to a screened room that can only be accessed by adults, somebody over the age of 18. We've set it up with this licensing system. And the one thing that is different from our other licensing systems is that I set this one up, and if my recollection is we look at adoption instead of a calendar year license, a June 1 to June 30 license for two reasons. Number one, if we were to do that, we don't have to get into any kind of short year applications for this year. We can go ahead and give people notice of this, let them know it's coming up. They can apply for their license in June and then we'll be ready to consider those in July. The other reason is every other license that we have, the planning and zoning administration, planning and zoning will be administering this one in conjunction with the police department to do it in December. And with alcohol licenses, what else do we have? Alcohol licenses, business licenses, alcohol licenses, alcohol pouring permits, they are just inundated in December. And we may be in situ, but this may help to avoid some really difficult times with the staff if we were to have this one be on a physical year licensing system instead of a calendar year licensing system. It's very, very similar to what the county does in terms of the regulations on the items themselves. We do a couple of things different in terms of the licensing, in terms of who's going to be doing the background checks and that sort of thing. Who's putting the application together, where do your fields go and that. Other than that, in terms of enforcement, what I think is the most important thing, it'll be a seamless enforcement mechanism between the sheriff's office, city PD, what they do here and what they do out in the county. Happy to answer any questions on that at all.
So current businesses that sell, will they have to get licensed too?
Yes.
Another article doing it, there's no grand father.
They'll be given time. That's one of the things about starting this on this June 1 timeframe, gives us time for our code enforcement models to get out to the community and introduce people to the ordinance, show them the ordinance, and then they have time to get in.
Yeah, what you're going to move to the back, I think, those little things that you spray with water or whatever.
Like a bomb.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Good.
I want Casey to kind of update you guys and the public for that matter on some issues that are going on around this.
Just to give you a little bit of background on why I think this ordinance was needed is because we've had some issues with children underage, under the age of 18, who've ingested stuff from these shops. And it has placed them in the hospital. There's all kinds of side effects to them. They really don't know what they're doing, what they're actually ingesting a lot of times. They go by a lot of different names, there's street slang for them, everything. So we need some way to regulate this. We had, we didn't have, but it was purchased in the city last week. There was three kids transported from North Persie High School to the emergency room for a product that they bought here in the city. So we got to have some way to get into these shops and regulate this kind of stuff.
Would this take that product off the market?
It will allow us to go in and inspect, and that will, that will keep it out of there. If they know we can come in and inspect it anytime, then yes, it will keep it out of there. But right now, we, we have to have a legal reason to go in and start looking at stuff that will give us an opportunity to inspect.
When I was told we had three kids go to the hospital because of this, I was not very happy. And I think we need to do whatever we can to help keep our kids and kids and the whole community safe. So I think it's very needed. It's my two cents worth.
So we ready to adopt this? Yeah, you are.
On the screened room, Kevin?
Yes.
What about the, like the vape shop set, the entire place is a vape shop?
Thank you, Casey.
Those, those kind of materials are going to have to be screened off.
So when you walk into a...
It may be a situation where you're getting something like that with a liquor shop, a liquor store like that, where you have to be a certain age to go in even.
Gotcha.
Maybe the way they have to go with that sort of stuff. If there's ones that are certain, that are selling nothing but that product to begin with, you know, even if they're holding themselves out to be a tobacco shop, there's really no reason somebody under the age of 18 should be going in there because they can't buy it.
Some of the vape shops don't sell paraphernalia. They just strictly sell vape stuff.
Right, correct.
So they'll have to have a separate room or they walk in and get ID'd or something like that?
If the device can be used, that falls under the section that feels...
Well, if they just start a policy that you call it, they're...
Right.
Take the building, it's a security system.
Right. Yeah, that's the kind of...
So those, those kind of alternative nicotine products, they are going to have to have a permit from the city to do those. Those are not the ones though which have to necessarily be screened, but they are going to have a permit to do it.
Gotcha.
More of those devices.
Okay.
So it's not just to kind of, kind of, it's not the cigarette necessarily that are the problem.
Sure.
Well, not cigarettes are the problem. It's not those that have to be screened off. It's more the...
Pipes and roller papers and all that stuff.
Yeah, the roller papers. No, those could be held out because those could still be out. It's the...
Glass pipe bombs, stuff like that?
Got it.
Any other discussion?
I'm dying to know, will it put you in hospital for the vape shop?
That's probably not good. That's why they went to hospital.
It's like that fake weed, I think is what it is.
Fake marijuana.
Oh, really? Too much tobacco in them?
Yeah, there's a big thing on Facebook, big article I was reading about it, and it's pretty crazy.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion. We approve the ordinance.
A second.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh. Thank you. Next item's the Kiwanis property on Pilgrim Mill Road.
Mayor, last month, we instructed the group that came in regarding this to come back to us in a month with their, with another plan. I've not heard anything back from them yet. I checked with Scott and planning and zoning. He also has not heard anything back from them. So we're just in a holding pattern at this time.
They're here tonight?
I don't see them here. No.
All right. Well, nothing else to handle there. Next on the agenda is item B, parking wreck, alcoholic beverages at the wrecking. Oh, no, I did that under new business. That's under new business. That's old business.
Okay.
Yeah.
I did too.
Sorry, Greg.
Thank y'all. Couple of months ago, that was before y'all, was us developing guidelines for the serving of alcoholic beverages at events at the County Recreation Department Conference Center. We have spent a couple of months putting some guidelines together. A lot of this is from other guidelines from other facilities that do allow the service of alcohol. We've tried to learn from them and glean what we can from them. So what I have for you is just the list of the guidelines that we have developed for y'all to look over, see if anything catches your eye, see if anything that you like or dislike. There are a couple of questions highlighted in yellow. I think they're on the third page of your, of the information we've given you as far as the handling of the security to be provided during the event. We had initially discussed putting that burden on the renter to contact whoever it may be, whether it be Casey's groups or whatever, to provide the officers on site. And speaking with a couple of other organizations, they've run into issues with, security doesn't show up. There was a mistake. There was a miscommunication. And, you know, you're left with an event that's expecting to sell alcohol and, you know, regardless of whose fault it is, you don't have security there. My question was, will we be better served for us to assume that responsibility of securing the security officers for that and just sending that cost on through to the renter through the agreement with it? That way, we know that it's been set up. We're the ones handling it. We got it arranged. We got it scheduled. We're the ones that's got the contact. If someone were not to show up or anything like that happened, rather than having an event that doesn't have security, I just, we'd feel a little bit better if we were in control of that rather than the renter. Yes, ma'am.
You've got sponsor here. Is the sponsor of the event the person that's going to have it? Or do you have to have a caterer that holds a select license?
Well, we'll get in just a little bit later. You will have to have a...
The sponsors just having the event.
Having the event?
Yeah.
The sponsor will be the organization sponsoring the entire event. They will have to have a licensed carrier with a licensed pour.
Is that in here?
Yes, ma'am.
They also ask for a phone to the responsible person.
They will have a sponsor and a on-site supervisor for the event. So we're kind of double layers there and trying to track it back and make sure we've got somebody responsible from the organization.
What about this part, the section that says alcohol prohibited? What are we trying to do there?
Thank you, Father.
Right. So how would it work then? They pay a vendor just a certain amount?
That would, the recommendations from other vendors or from other sites that allow it is that it will be the responsibility between the sponsor and the caterer, whatever fee they come set up, whether, you know, I tell you how much I want served, how much I want, but they pay the, the caterer directly.
In other words, it could still be it's buy the drink.
Right.
But one person's paying the whole tab.
Right. Well, I can't pull $5 out of my pocket.
Not...
Open bar.
So they can keep up with it?
I got a wedding.
Right. Whoever's having the event then pays the, the pour.
How do you distinguish, like, if you had an event and just, if you had a party, would charge people to come to the park?
It's the same thing. You're just not cash exchanging, cash exchanging hands at each drink.
On site, right.
Or like a wedding, you're paying for it. Whoever's paying for it's paying for it.
And in the most of it, quite frankly, we are trying, I guess, to dissuade the thought, the thinking that, hey, we can have a, a party at the park and we can bring a cooler full of beer, or I can just bring money and I can buy as much, you know. If it's regulated through the sponsor and the event supervisor, you know, it also gives them a little bit more leeway to say, hey, sir, I don't think you need any more. We're okay. So it's just the exchange of money, whether it be a barter of any kind, whether it's the exchange of money, exchange of tickets that they purchase.
Do you have to have an insurance, buy an insurance policy at all with the event?
Not, not, not separate, no.
Well, you used to in the county. The last event I had, I had to buy an insurance policy.
I'll have to, well, once we get to this point, I've not had a chance to sit down with Kevin and the attorneys on, on whether, and I'm sure some of the verbiage in here that they'll need to dress it up and suck the big long words into it and all that kind of stuff, but...
Insurance is not the problem.
I'm a journalism major. It is.
I couldn't believe I had to do that, but I did. Now, that was five, six years ago. It may not be, not have to do it now.
Lanier Tech does not require proof of insurance for an event to have alcohol down there.
This was Sexton Hall.
Where?
Sexton Hall.
Sexton Hall.
I think it's pretty close to what I was thinking. I think we'll be able to capture some things we missed as far as event wise, especially limited with Fridays and Sunday around.
That will eliminate there being any conflict with us having other program for the smaller children who are there.
And Friday, if there was something, they would just have to work that out scheduling wise.
Well, we, we, once we get this into place, we'll know that we will not schedule programming on Friday night. So that'll just be, right now, our programming on Friday nights ends at about 5:30. You know, most of your events on Friday nights are going to be after that anyway. But the, the question as far as the security, what y'all's opinion on whether you think it's better for it to be handled through us. And speaking with Casey, they do recommend and most of the other places do require a minimum of two officers. I know the last time we had the discussion that that might need to be changed based on the size of the groups, but what kind of a break off, what kind of a split off do y'all want? Most do require a minimum of two officers. The rationale being if one officer has an incident or a situation that they have to deal with, you've got another officer there to kind of control everything else. I understand y'all's thought process of, you know, if it's a party for 50 people, is that overkill? I don't know how many smaller parties. And speaking, especially with Lanier Tech, most of the, most of the rentals that do allow alcohol are for bigger groups. You don't, they don't have 40, 50 people parties that allow alcohol. It's, it's pretty much 100 and more. That's just something for y'all to consider and offer your input in which direction you want, would like us to go.
I mean, me personally, I'm fine with you scheduling the security.
Me too.
And it's the same. You could say, here's, you need to write a check for this much to...
And that would, and that would be a matter of how we do that. Can they, even though we do it, can they write the check directly to the enforcement, which would keep it from going through our books and all through our hands and everything? We're arranging it if they're paying for it and they will pay them directly.
Yeah, they can do that.
The other thing that was recommended where the maximum amount of time you can serve alcohol is three hours, any three hour span. Most places require security to be there 30 minutes prior to that time and 30 minutes after that time. So if you're, if you're serving alcohol for 30, for three hours, you're going to have security there.
I'm fine with that too.
On this last question about how to establish the approved list, I mean, I would, I would let anybody that wanted to be in town, wanting to be on the approved list, if they went through whatever protocols we have, just have them listen. And somebody asks you, just have them listen, this is who you can use.
I don't have an issue with that. The mayor and I had discussed this and let that, you know, maybe it's, it's open to city limit or city of coming providers that want to provide it. I would still recommend that, you know, even if whatever, anybody wants to be able to do it, I would ask that we still let them fill out an application to be on our list.
Yes.
That way, we can verify their alcohol license, their pours license. We can have all that pre-approved rather than, hey, I want roosters to cater a party here, but you don't have any information on them. You know, that way, you know, we can give them an application and say, if you're interested in applying to be a server of alcohol for our events, go ahead and vet it out and have that pre-approved. And then that's the list that we will give to the people that would like to do that.
And on that, I think, you know, it's kind of like you patronize local businesses. To me, I think that whoever pours in the city, in city events, you know, stuff like that ought to have a city of coming alcohol license.
Right. And that makes sense. I mean, we're supporting our own if we do it that way. But rather than just open it up, if you've got a license incoming, well, we still got to vet everything before every event. If we just have a list that we can do them, I think it simplifies things for us. That's really the two biggest questions I had left unless y'all see some other issues like Christopher did, or something you've got questions about or any...
If they've already got a last.
I think it's pretty close. I mean, I'm in favor of Kevin's office going to do it, start to craft an ordinance.
Not an ordinance. This is just policy.
Yeah, your, your alcohol ordinance already permits this, which has been the policy of the city in the past, that the city as a property owner didn't want alcohol to be served there. And so it's more just making sure that it's how it can be dealt with the rules and regulations for the fair ground.
Include more than limiting the beer in line?
How much is the security?
Forty dollars an hour for a four hour minimum.
Per person though, right?
Per officer.
What about limiting like he suggested, have to have some people, like when there is, if it's 50 people.
I'm fine with that.
That's what I was thinking.
Fine with what? I'm sorry.
Limiting it to, and have alcohol to have, have to have at least 50 people or something.
Or 100 or, or whatever. The rule of thumb is, is, that other people use, and I don't mean to just claim that they're the know all be alls, but two security officers to be able to serve it and then one additional officer. Like if you have 100 people, it's two. If you get up to 110, then it's, it's one, another security officer for anything over 100. If you go over 200, it would be an additional security officer after that. So it's basically two officers up to 100 and then one officer per 100 after that for anything over that initial 100.
Two officers for 100. Wait, under 100. But that's, it doesn't really matter. It's just whoever's paying. Right. But they're also paying for a wedding or something else and then have to tack on another $300 for security. And then you're limiting them to 50 people. They gotta have 50 people there to have alcohol.
No, they can have alcohol with less than 50 people. I'm saying you only have to have one officer if you have less than 50.
And if you have 100, you have to have two.
Right.
I thought they were saying...
For 51 to 100.
I thought they were saying not, you couldn't do the alcohol permit at all if she had 150 people.
No.
No, you can do it under. She don't have one officer.
Most events that go to the expense of providing alcohol or for a bigger event for 100 people. They don't limit it themselves. It's just the fact that most events that do allow alcohol are larger than 100. So less than 50 would be one, 51 to 100 would be two, and then one per 100 above that? Is that what you're saying?
I'm fine with that.
I think it's fine.
Any other discussion? Do we need to vote, Kevin, to adopt this policy?
You're not moving it yet.
Yep. So you're going to tweak it and then?
I'll get with Greg. We'll sit down in the next couple of weeks.
I'll put the recommendations from tonight into it and make it by your office and that way, whatever else we need to get from it, the liability claim at the end where they sign and say I waived it, I'll put your verbiage in that and that.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much.
This is actually something that Bill will be able to refer you to.
Greg has gotten a lot of my input on this. What you heard from Greg, me and him talked about.
Next on the agenda is the coming fairgrounds, fairground appointments. You know, all that came up and we set up where you could, we could do a fair board, be an advisory board to the council back in January. It's not been discussed since then, so I thought we should bring it back up and kind of waiting on appointments, names from you guys.
What is our, what does it say? How many?
It was five to 20. Is that right, Kevin?
I believe that's right.
Phil, how many were on there?
How many were on the fair board? I think it was, it was seven or eight. Do you know, Jim?
Yeah, eight.
I mean, I would be in favor of seeing if any of those, whoever would want to serve, continue serving on this and then make an appointment.
Yeah, I think we should bring in, maybe focus to the city.
If we, how about the 20, you can, you can do like two or three per council member if you're suggesting.
Do you want 20? There'd be a lot of different opinions.
I think you just get some backs.
Might be some headbutting going on.
Here's the deal. If you gave, you got five council members, you pick two people each. That's 10 members. Three would be 15. Four would be 20. I know we're not, you know, we're not prepared tonight to give names, but I just wanted to bring it back up to...
Well, I mean, what do y'all think about the people that were on there?
Who was on there before?
Do you know off the top of your head?
It was basically the former... It was basically the former board of, the, the former council board, including the mayor and Steve and Gerald. Steve Bennett and Gerald Blackburn.
I, I wouldn't have any issue with it.
We might be good, for their, for their experience. And then put new people like you said.
Yeah, I, you definitely would need new people on there.
Do you want me to, I mean, I'll be willing to contact all of them if you want me to.
That means that?
Do we have to come up, I mean, do we, we need a hard and fast rule of everybody want to, or if you just know somebody you want to, that would be good, somebody wants?
Or reach out, everybody find out they want to.
Yeah.
So, the, 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 the board members are, or were, for Greg, Gerald Blackburn, John DQ, Louis Ledbetter, Linda Ledbetter, Quincy Holt, and Steve Bennett and Ralph Perry. Those last one, two, three, four, five women, they're not serving now, they were serving twenty, those are your members, they were, I tell you, we don't need council members on our, on our advisory board, so there's two, you need us to take off right there.
Which you can be if you want to.
It kind of redundant, but it's...
You're kind of needed anyway.
The purpose, they're making recommendations to the council.
They have no power, they're just...
We're just bringing in recommendations.
He was on it, right? I didn't watch on it.
I almost got to see Louis, who wanted to own it, though.
Well, he can.
I was just cute sitting in his little go-kart down there. I think of him sitting there in that go-kart.
I mean, if it's all right with y'all, I'd like for Phil to call them all and see if they, any of them want, who wanted to serve, and allow the ones that wanted to be, continue on.
Do we want to come up with, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, with the several of those folks, because we want to come up with our full list first and contact everybody that's on it.
I don't really know anybody else that won't be on it.
I mean, I've, I've got a few names that, that I think might be interested in, people that...
Me too.
I think have been involved.
I get two people that asked me to be on it. Different.
Then maybe just propose a total list at the end?
True.
For next work session?
That'll work.
Probably, probably the most organized way to go about it, if you have a plan, would be to get the names of people you're interested in, Phil, Phil can contact them, see if they're interested in being nominated by this board. That way, nobody's committed, you're gonna put any one particular person on it, and then once you know who actually is interested in doing it, then you often have a vote on it, as opposed to just trying to figure out, see who's, you know, that way you know they're interested before you have to discuss it.
Yep.
So, y'all get the names to fill?
Yep.
Ever who you want, whether it's ten people, or, that's why I was trying to say so many per...
Yeah.
Person that you didn't have.
Nobody go over four and we won't hurt each other.
Well, you will, you could.
Oh, 'cause we...
If you're leaving, right.
I guess to agree for council member and, and then we can, will it out, that's the thing.
Does anybody in the room want to volunteer to be on there? Catherine Amis on the list.
Put her name.
She was my mom in there.
Jason Mays on the list.
Would y'all consider Michelle Edward, I think it was Michelle, the tourism director of the chamber?
I don't know her, but I don't have...
She does a great job of tourism and trying to just get the word out about the city and the county and...
She live in the city?
Well, we got others that don't live in the city that are on there.
Do we?
Gerald and Steve.
They live in Silver City, don't they?
Yep.
What's her name? What's the name, Mary Ann?
I'll get her, I'll get you.
All right, or just get Phil if you don't care.
I'll, I'll get you, Phil.
Mm-hmm, you're what?
We keep on, we'll have the list done right now.
I've got it, yeah, I've written down that, but then again, just hope to contact them all to...
Yeah, just wanna get them to me, I'll contact them and see if they're interested.
So, y'all get them to fill this week?
Yeah.
That work?
All right. Next on the agenda is item eight, new business administration, IGA with Forsyth County.
Mayor, the, you know, I think everybody's excited about this, Friday is our first Food Truck Friday event, where we're gonna deliver near School Street, between the old school and Brandon Hurd House and the parking deck. One of the things that you had mentioned, talked about doing, was giving some picnic tables over there, so people have a place to sit. That was appro, we approached Forsyth County about that and the county has requested an intergovernmental agreement to run for twenty-five years, renewable for another twenty-five years after that.
Help picnic tables?
Yes, ma'am, for picnic tables. And here's, I'll, I'll give you the breakdown of this. The property's owned by the county, the city is gonna acquire the tables, the county and the city are then gonna split the cost of installation, or the city's gonna be the one to handle it, so we should get a plan.
You're gonna stay there permanently?
They are, they're gonna be actually installed on concrete, and the county's going to approve the locations, Phil's already got a diagram that, once this is submitted, this is approved, then we can submit it to the county. There is a, there is a provision that allows the county to require us to remove them if, you know, if for some reason they need to be removed in the future. The city will be reimbursed its installation cost based upon straight line depreciation, so...
Like if they widen the rate or something?
Something like that, yes. And then these are all pre-used for the Food Truck Friday event.
The county's gonna really need that.
I, I, you know, I...
And then, and, they're a thousand dollars a piece, approximately, so...
It is dollars.
Yeah, I think the mayor's, all that you said, you've been making a great job of getting people to donate those.
So, it's, so anyway, we have contacted some people, and if anybody else in the room would like to donate a thousand dollars for a picnic table. Kevin's firm has generously donated a table, Christopher's firm has, we've got some other...
Did they fire on it or anything?
Yeah, they get their name on it, you know, this park bench donated by so-and-so. Anyway, we'll end up getting all the part, the, everything will get paid for with donated funds, but that gives a, a little nice little pocket park there, really, it's a nice little area. It can be used for more than just Food Truck Fridays, you know, people at the Brandon Hurd House, you know, if they had something with food there, people could go across the street.
Jason was one.
That kind of stuff.
Jason was the one.
Said Jason stepped up. Well, we got three of them sold.
I got some in my hands.
But anyway, that's where we're at with it. We're taking some up there temporarily for this Friday, they won't be mounted to the ground yet, and then they'll be picking them up after the event, but that's where we're at, my recommendations to do their IGA, we didn't pay for it, the county did, that was their thing they wanted to do.
They needed to spend some money.
The county and their IGA. I, I make a move, we sign it.
I have a second. Please vote, motion carries four oh. Next on the agenda is personal transportation vehicle ordinance. In other words, lawnmower or golf cart.
Well, neither of them qualify. Mayor, we were asked to look into developing a personal transportation vehicle ordinance, and this is a mess, I mean, absolutely a mess of state law. I actually brought, this is just a handful of the Georgia code sections to deal with this issue. The short of it is, the city has the ability to adopt by ordinance, regulations that allow the use of personal transportation vehicles, which is a fancy word, golf cart, on certain city streets and possibly on certain city sidewalks, where we cannot do it, where we cannot have any jurisdiction over the allowing of these types of vehicles on state routes and on state right of ways, so not even on the sidewalks or anything like that. Another mayor's gonna actually meet, put some folks to D to P about that, I'll let him speak to that. This is purely for you to look at right now, because when we do this, we are actually required to adopt what's called a personal transportation vehicle plan, and that's going to require Jason McCook to give us something, if we're gonna have any places where both vehicular traffic and PTV traffic will be utilized, Jason McCook is going to have, have to give us something stating that we're not going to adversely impact the flow of vehicular traffic, we're not gonna create safety issues. You know, just to give you an example, you know, if you wanted to use a PTV in a residential neighborhood, Hickory Ridge or Dare Park or something like that, you, if you're gonna use it on the street, even for those areas, we're gonna have to have a traffic engineer say you're not gonna adversely impact traffic flow and you're not gonna create a safety hazard. So, this is just...
What if I does?
Well, so, right now...
We're trying to make it legal for them to do it.
No, you, oh, yeah, they might up down the street like that.
He's probably there along right now.
Yep, my next door neighbor.
So, that's what, that's where it is, this is, we're working towards, you know, we will, there, there'll be some, besides just the, the investment in getting that, that, you know, those certifications and stuff like that, there are just gonna be some signs that have to be put up, if we're gonna have any places where we're gonna cross a state route or a state highway, you have to have certain kinds of intersections and you can't do it, but that's something that we can work with Jason on in the next, in the next weeks or month.
And you can't put them on the sidewalk?
Not on state side, not on state routes, no.
But you can on city?
It, it needs to be designated a personal transportation vehicle path, and that has its own set of definitions that we have to...
You probably have to have that and a, and a sidewalk.
I'll let the mayor talk about what the...
I was just talking, I was talking about not running down the pedestrians, but...
Then I'm of the same opinion, that if you got a sidewalk there, it's safer for everybody involved, but our biggest issue with trying to make it where Cummins, you know, golf cart friendly is state routes, we have them Highway nine, Highway twenty, Highway three oh six, well, there are requirements, as you read the letter that I received, you have to have a ten-foot wide path with two-foot shoulders on each side. I mean, you gotta have bigger than a, than a lane of traffic, and there are so many places it's just not feasible, you'd take out front parking lots of businesses and everything else, so. I'm meeting with the head of DOT next week, not necessarily about this, but we're gonna discuss it and see if there's any wiggle room in that, 'cause it's, you're legal to cut your grass on a state route right up to the asphalt, but you can't ride a golf cart in the right of way. It's like you can drive your lawnmower to town, but you can't drive your golf cart to town. So, that's kind of what we're gonna talk about, so...
Is that Georgia, that you're allowing these to take?
Exactly.
Kevin, if we can't get anything done like that, is there a lowest stance way to kind of make it more neighborhood friendly?
Well, inside a neighborhood, inside a neighborhood, as long as, I, I...
What if your neighborhood's a cut through?
I'm not anticipating a lot of issues inside residential neighborhoods.
What if your neighborhood's a cut through?
I'm sorry.
Our neighborhood is a cut through.
Well, it depends on the speed limit on the road, and then again, it's gonna depend on what the traffic engineer says about it.
He's gonna, he's gonna probably be deemed determined by the number of vehicles you have in the course of speed limit. So, if you got a road that's forty mile an hour posted, he's got a house, being in your day travel, I'd rather recommendation be not to allow that path.
So, y'all streets twenty-five.
You got a low volume?
Yeah.
Like a street that's in Hickory Ridge with the coal site, and then you have a hundred vehicles, got loads on the day, or not?
So, he'll have to do a study on each street who will be on or...
If you're gonna allow it on a street that's gonna also have to do with the traffic, you have to get that certification.
If, if nothing else, developing that, which you could determine what...
Anyway, there's nothing to be acted on, this gives y'all something to read and...
I just can't believe you can't ride on the sidewalk. Obviously, you're not gonna run anybody's bank on the sidewalk.
Yeah, there are lots of things. You know, I made this comment in the, in the draft ordinance before, we thought about using those PTV lanes, but there are all kinds of alternative transportation vehicles you can use on the sidewalk, you can use a Segway, or you can use, you know, one of those hoverboard scooters that my son is so good at riding on, he can ride that all over the place. In fact, there's a kid, there are a couple of kids, one kid rides a Segway to Central every day, and there's a couple of kids who ride those hoverboards, you know, and some of those will go fifteen, driving almost twenty miles an hour, but you can't...
If you can ride a hoverboard, you're an athlete.
And you're not if you ride a golf cart. What are you saying? What are you saying?
I want the golf cart. I don't think I'll ever make the hoverboard.
I find it interesting that you can ride bikes up and down any street you want, but you can't ride, drive a golf cart.
And those bikes just screw up everything. They do. I mean, you can't, you know, if I was afraid, I'm gonna hit one, but you can't have a golf cart.
Who'd have thunk it?
Oh, well.
All right, moving on, number three, car wash on Highway twenty. Who's speaking on it? Scott?
Um, no.
All right, I'll speak on it.
I mean, I'm familiar with the situation that we, we got with, with someone who wanted to put one there, but, but, it's a property that wasn't that some CBD, car wash isn't allowed in some businesses.
Yep, so, beside Hamilton State Bank, a group is trying to, they would like to put a car wash on that corner lot.
So, you're doing...
It's a American drive.
I mean, American drive.
Yep, so, but it would take a conditional use permit to do so, 'cause it's not called for in the CBD district.
They could re, oh, they could, or someone take the condition.
Right. So, the question is, do you want a car wash there, or...
I've, I've heard from individuals involved in it that they have that under contract that, that the car wash, if we allow it, they have a secondary contingent, that would be a cleaning store, which does fall in.
It's wet across the road.
But it does fall, I believe if it falls in, the CBD would, would work there.
Is Hamilton State Bank not complaining?
They probably didn't know, even the secret.
Has Hamilton State Bank said anything about it?
I have not talked to anybody from Hamilton State Bank.
That was just my, when, when I was informed about it, um...
And this is nothing to act on right now, this is just to bring it to your teaching.
But I don't want to see a convenience store there either, so the way I heard about it, it's gonna be one or the other.
Well, I'd better have a car wash. Hit me? There's not one that, that way at all.
We could have more control over aesthetics and, and things like that with the car wash then, because we would be given an unconditional use.
It's a pretty small lot, is it not?
But, it's like one point three.
We can do it? We, we, it's not, it's, 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 it's just, just like this.
Is there a car wash at the...
If somebody comes in, if somebody comes in, they need to apply for zoning or rezoning, you can...
Put the position on it, that landscape and anything else.
So, if there's something, if something's coming in where there's no zoning, that's going to be required on it, like the, like the, the C store, for example, you're just gonna be dealing with permitting.
Yeah.
So, it's, I ran it away and answered the question, the car wash is gonna require some kind of zoning action, whether it's rezoning or couple, whatever we can do, you don't have, you don't have the ability to, to place zoning conditions as equivalent.
Yeah, I...
And if that, if that is in fact accurate, what I was told, then...
They did also mention the possibility that a restaurant would be allowed there.
They are digging up the ground now.
That's a...
That's us?
Yeah.
I'd rather, I'd rather a restaurant be there than any, any of them out of the three.
Me too. Me too.
Anyway, that's all we got on that. The next is item four, arena at the fairgrounds.
Mr. Mayor, I've got copies, uh, we had, I'm gonna hand these out to everyone real quickly. Uh, this is a expansion project that we're looking at on the fairgrounds, the covered arena. Uh, we had asked architect, architect, uh, a couple of months ago to, uh, just give us a design to look at of what we might, potential options, what we might could do there to the, to expand the capacity of the arena, um, also to add, you know, a different stage and an entertainment, uh, lounge, a, uh, basically a place for the entertainers to, to stay while they're there. Um, he's come back to us with two options, the first two pages, SA one and SA two. Uh, the first option is gonna increase the capacity of the arena by approximately fifteen hundred, uh, people. Uh, the second option really doesn't focus as much on expanding as much as it does just adding the backstage area and also a movable stage, it really won't add any capacity, uh, to the arena. Um, we've got elevations, uh, different plans in here to look at, and the point we're at now is if we want him to give us a price on, an estimate on, on one of these options, we need to let him know that, uh, that way he can give us some, some numbers that we can use in negotiating, uh, this at a later date.
Because this is open agreement, we can't connect it to the two back walls, can we?
We can't enclose it, no.
You can't enclose it?
No.
Just the one question I've got, which, the only way I'm really interested, I mean, interested in expanding it, I wouldn't be interested in just adding a stage without expanding.
Right.
But kinda the way he's got it here is that, does that limit the rodeo from being able to get, is it closing it in too much on the end that they can't get in and out?
That was something we took up with him when we, uh, when we initiated talks with him to make sure that we could still hold the events that we have now, and this should not restrict us in doing that.
That's didn't how much room they needed and kinda weren't showing the gate and-
Right.
All that.
Yeah, I don't think they need a lot of room right there, uh, on the side to bring in the animals, uh, they usually have it set up, they've got, uh, temporary fence and they set up at each side, each, each end of the arena to do that on.
And then what's the cost on him coming up with a price?
Oh, we've done, we've done, uh, approved that for him to do the plans, and it would, it would include-
That includes the quotes, yeah.
Yeah. He just, he just wanted us to look at it before he went forward with getting the, uh, the numbers on it. He can get a quote on both options, or if you, what's that now?
There's no sense on getting that.
Yeah, I mean, SA two was just-
The whole idea was to expand the capacity, right?
Right, right, this was just a, another thing to look at if you wanted to do something a little different with the arena.
This isn't increasing any seat in this option, right.
But yeah, the primary goal was to expand the capacity, and SA two would be optional.
That's a temporary stage.
But then he said if we see anything in SA two, like the temporary, the, uh, the movable stage, if we wanted to add that, we could do that.
We had any time, either one.
Yeah.
Well, I, I mean, my thought is that to get a quote on the first page, which is adding the additional fifteen hundred seats and the permanent stage.
And he, he said it would take him about seven days to get all the numbers on that, so we could probably get it ready.
This is gonna be a splash project.
Do we have, uh, portable bleachers that can be put in at the back end, like if there's a concert?
We don't own any portable bleachers, uh, all of these are-
If you were to put them here?
Yeah, right.
Set up chairs.
Yeah, but they just, they just fill it in with, with chairs as far back as they can.
Just chairs, hilarious.
Well, if you're having a concert and there's like the front area where it's standing up here, and I guess if you're sitting in a chair, I bet you could see over them since you're, the steps is high enough on the stage.
The stage is high, yes.
I wouldn't be opposed to sitting in one of them.
But there would be room for whatever is necessary to come to events.
We'd be opposed to see what some bleachers would cost to, to make it a full on.
And we could, we could research that and get a price on that.
Good to hear some states in this, prices.
Tracy.
How good with having him price out the first option there?
Yeah.
We'll get that down.
Yeah, mentioned about the, the bleachers too.
Yeah.
We don't need to vote on that, do we, Kevin? Next item, planning, zoning, annexation of number two oh one eight one six one, Linwood Development Group Public Hearing. Um, I'd like to open the meeting up for, uh, comments, so I need to do it. Yeah. We have a motion that we go into public hearing.
Do we, do we want to start presenting first, what it is, or?
Either way, you can open that in the elect design, or you get his time to count against the gentleman.
Motion, I second.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh to go into public. Public hearing, Scott.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, you have any packet of the proposed annexation application, uh, as well as the staff report, uh, I would just like to read the staff report into the record before we, uh, before we open up the comments, uh, in the public hearing. The, uh, property owners have made application to the property authorities to annex seven parcels totaling, uh, a hundred and ten point five two four acres, more or less, and rezon them to city highway business. Uh, three of the seven parcels have commercial structures on them, three parcels are vacant, and one parcel has a residence on it, all of plans to demolish the structure. Uh, Forsyth County has notified the city they have no land use objection to proposed annexation and rezoning, that is also in the packet. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this annexation and rezoning on March twentieth, and no stated opposition recommended approval of the annexation and rezoning to highway business with the following three conditions. The existing residential structure on parcel A will be demolished and removed prior to any new construction. The existing commercial structures on parcels E, F, and G cannot be expanded, modified, or renovated unless approved and permitted by the Department of Planning and Zoning. And condition number three, all future development in any parcels shall be approved by the mayor and council and permitted by the Department of Planning and Zoning. I'd be happy to answer any questions before we open it up to comments.
So how would that condition number three work, that anytime they would come for a business lesson to do something?
No, I mean, if, if they were, uh, if they were wanting, for example, to put, uh, new developments on the property, uh, those would have to be, those plans would, we'd recommend to be approved by the, uh, by the council, uh, and then, and then permitted through us. I mean, if it was, uh, uh, once it's an existing business, then-
Right, but in highway business, if there's a permitted use, if they wanted to use it for something that's not already there, they would have to come to us.
Technically, the way that-
Typically, highway business, they would, they would just have to go through-
Typically, they would just come and permit it from us and get plan approval from us, but in this case, we're, um, we're, we're, this was the recommendation from the Planning Commission anyway, that they do it this way.
I think that catches it where we don't have to figure out what they're deciding to do yet.
Do they already have soon? I haven't worked that.
Right behind the hospital.
Oh, so they have-
Yeah. It's a cross from the Rock Quarry.
Okay.
And then goes over to Highway nine, crosses four hundred.
Next, and then we all through that there.
Goes basically down, can't travel on the road crossing.
No. We don't have any road, we're gonna pick up a little bit of road on-
I think that's a good condition because just a blanket zone, I think it's kinda scary, but I think that, I think that was, they would hold up.
Any other discussions on? Have anyone that'd like to speak, uh, for, uh, the annexation?
Good evening, council members, Mr. Mayor, my name is Keisha Chambly, I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Again, um, this is ten tax map numbers by Forsyth County's coding system, we have it separated into seven tracks labeled A through G, and it does run basically from the hospital down to across from quarry, it jumps four hundred, and then that's basically Liquid Antiques mark, so it's parcels. Uh, we don't believe there is any opposition at this point, we haven't heard from anyone that opposes the annexation, um, we did receive recommendation from the Planning Commission. I don't believe there are any issues, um, as you're aware, there is a referendum going up, but at this point, that's not an issue, that hasn't passed, so we would request that you go ahead and, and accept the application, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, there's several different owners.
Is the whole thing the proposed referendum area?
No.
Everything except for the property west of four hundred.
So how does it work? You may know, or Kevin may know, how would it work if your referendum did get passed?
And then this D N.
Well, there's actually no precedent on that issue.
Potentially.
Of course, there's a statute that talks about islands, um, but that only deals with, you can't create unincorporated islands, this would be an incorporated island, so there's actually no precedent whatsoever on incorporated islands that I have been able to find in many, many hours of research, so.
I think what you was talking about is how those, you were talking about that, that one little area?
Well, both aspects of what, what happens to the area outside of the referendum area and what happens to the area inside of the referendum area, it could be treated differently or treated the same, or, I mean, it just, it's just-
So, so the area that's outside of the proposed, um, of the proposed area for the Sharon Springs referendum, if, here, here's, here's how this works. So if that referendum were to be passed on May twentieth, I'm sorry, sorry, wait, wait a second, um, if that were to be, if that were to pass, the un, the, the area that is outside the referendum would no longer be contiguous to the city of Cumming, which, if Chambly's arrived, there's no authority on how that's handled, except for the fact that under Georgia law, your annexation isn't effective until the first day of the month following the month of adoption, which means that the annexation wouldn't be effective until June one, and if the referendum were to pass on May twenty-second by June one, it's, it can't be contiguous at that point, does that make sense?
So if just the referendum passes, it's fixed the boundary line?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's set at that point. It would be set.
Mr. Chambly, is what, is there a reason, um, stated reason your client wants to move in?
We love coming and we wanna be a part of it.
Great answer.
I think they'd rather face us for zoning.
Well, what's not, would be the camp, I mean, it would be if the referendum passes.
Have any other questions for her? Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else that'd like to speak for the annexation? Anyone like to speak against the annexation? Most pleasure of the board.
There's a motion to close the public hearing.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh.
Mayor, do you know any more about him, any, any share, or?
No. They wanna be, they wanna be in the city of Cumming, they don't wanna be in the city of Sharon Springs, that's what I know. I don't wanna pay higher, I don't wanna pay higher taxes, but that's where we're- If the city of Sharon Springs passes on May twenty-second, then it's gonna cause the annexation to be null and void. If it doesn't, then it's part of the city of Cumming. That's it in a nutshell.
So they're forced to be in Sharon Springs if it passes, even though they're part of the, I, I, I heard what you said, they've got no, no standing at that point?
Once the governor signs the bill, that's the trick. The governor's, actually, this, this was fallen out a couple of years ago, there were some people in Brookhaven and, Brookhaven and Decatur, Brookhaven and Dorville, something like that, it was a similar situation where somebody did not wanna be part of the city, they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna go into that city, they didn't wanna go into a different city instead, it was more established, you know, in, in, some, very similar to the situation, and the Court of Appeals ruled that once the governor signed the bill, then if the referendum passes, that's, that, that's gonna be part of that use.
So we have a motion to approve the annexation?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second, please vote. Motion carries four oh.
With conditions.
With conditions.
Mr. Chambly, uh, is that resolved, or do we have to come back and go to the vote?
I don't think the, the, I don't think there'll be a need for you both to come back and go to the vote. Um, the city might take a, the city might take a ratifying vote at a later date, um, depending upon the outcome of the Sharon Springs referendum.
Is so, is a ratifying vote required? I'm, I'm not sure, i- is this final, or do we need to be concerned that it's not final at this point?
I, the city has taken, the city of Cumming has taken final action on the decision, on the decision to annex your, your property at this point. Are you the property owner?
We represent the property.
Okay, so the city of Cumming has now taken final action on this decision to annex, the, if there was a ratifying vote taken later on, that would just be more of a housekeeping measure, just to clean up any unresolved issues, because this issue of the governor signing the referendum about to happen, it's a little bit of uncharted waters, and so to protect the integrity of the city of Cumming's decision that it made tonight, the city might take a ratifying vote at a later date. I hope that answered your question. Where's Mr. Little, was there enough law words in that?
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
And now, woman, I'm gonna, Scott, Kevin.
Only thing that's gonna change is May twenty-second, that would be the only thing that could change it.
No more public hearings.
So, next item on the agenda is number two, temporary sign moratorium, public hearing.
Have we got any hearing on this packet on there?
I think so. Do I have a motion that we open the public hearing?
Second.
Second, please vote. Motion carries four oh. Are you, Kevin, don't remember this one?
I'll talk about it, there is something in the packet about it, uh, councilwoman laid out. Um, so the city has, um, discussed this, um, at a prior meeting, I think you discussed it the last work session, um, they're looking at making changes to your sign, um, and related that, you've asked us to prepare a resolution to do a temporary moratorium on the issue of the signed permits to commit the erection of new billboards. Your sign ordinance, the way it's written, doesn't specifically say billboards, um, instead, we have different categories of signs where a billboard might be placed, such as a pylon sign, a roof sign, a wall sign, a double-faced sign, um, multi-faced sign, those, which would make you all different kinds of signs that could be, uh, a billboard, and so that is what we have placed, uh, in this draft moratorium, um, it's in place for, and this has been properly noted and advertised, it's in place for a period of six months, or if you get your ordinance revision done faster than that, then moratorium will be lifted as soon as you enact the changes to your ordinance. Ms. Mayor, that, that's what I would offer in terms of introduction before anybody speaks in favor or against.
Any other questions for Kevin? Have anyone that'd like to speak in favor of the billboard moratorium? Mr. Morgan.
Wow, I think we would be in line to, to speak in favor of this. Hey, Morgan Hudgens here, I own Diamond Outdoor Advertising, one of the billboard companies here in Cumming, uh, been doing signs in here for twenty-five years, um, I'm in favor of this, uh, I, Cumming has one of the most lax sign ordinances in, anywhere in the area, I can just name cities and counties- I can just name cities and counties in the immediate area, all the way through Atlanta, and you have to jump through a lot of hoops and it's very difficult to get a new billboard permit. I've got a map that shows every single legal billboard location in the City of Coming. And there's probably, I hate to say this on the record, but 15 or 20 other locations out here. I don't think the City of Coming wants 15 or 20 more billboards. You've got a lot of them. I would recommend, and as I've spoken before, obviously, most cities and counties like to see that number go down over time, but you want to get them in the appropriate areas. And so with a cap and replace type scenario, what that allows you to do is as you annex more property or certain areas develop and other areas become more residential, you can go take them down in these areas in kind of a swapping nature to rebuild in a more appropriate area. You have to reduce number of poles in the city, reduce size, reduce height, a lot of reduction. But overall, it's good for the county in the reduction of signs, but it also lets us put them where they need to be and get them out of areas where they don't need to be. So I think it makes sense to take a look and see what you can do.
Any questions for Mr. Hudgens?
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh.
What are, we have plans for how to do the ordinance? I'd just say I recommend whoever is looking at that, you guys or Scott, speak with Morgan, give him a plethora of information and I think it would be helpful.
I've met with him on it. I mean, that's talking about take two down, put one up kind of deal. Right, so I'm all for less billboards.
Morgan's fought the wars, so he could probably advise Kevin what's legal.
The last, the current sign ordinance actually came out of litigation.
Because there was some, some big cases about the constitutionality of ordinances. Got to be careful. I think this is a good thing.
I have a motion to enact the moratorium.
I'll make that motion.
Second by Chad, please vote. Motion carries four oh. Number three, business license ordinance.
Mayor, this is an ordinance that we have prepared for you to make a couple of amendments to your business license ordinance. One is to update the definition of a charitable entity, that's in section one. The other revision is in section 14 dash 54 and it's on the second page of this part of your handout. It is to create a procedure whereby the City of Coming has the power to suspend or revoke the business license of a business if that business is being used for the commission of crimes or violating local ordinance of state law. We've experienced some situations recently where businesses have been used to commit violations of state law, to defraud customers, and when we looked at the options to deal with it, there really weren't any. But those are the business license ordinance that we did address. What happens if you file a false return and you include false information on your application? Scott and I ran into this last summer as well, dealing with something that you've already taken action on, massage parlors. We wanted to look at, we wanted to be able to revoke the business license of these places that are repeatedly being busted for prostitution and solicitation in massage parlors. And again, we couldn't because the business license didn't have that. So we've got this ordinance draft, this ordinance amendment prepared that would allow you to go about that. The way it works is you give people notice that you're intending to revoke or suspend their business license. They have a period of time where they can, they can say, no, please don't. If they don't say, if they don't appeal within that time period, then you can go ahead and do it. If they do appeal, they get to come before you and plead their case, and then you can make the decision based upon what information they're able to provide to you. They're able to sway you to plead the business license alone, then you can literally revoke it. If they're not persuasive, then you have the ability to suspend or revoke the license.
And this is, had a problem where Casey and them were going out there and they were defrauding people and they would catch them and it's like you couldn't stop them from doing business. This gives us that ability to, if somebody's not doing right by the citizens, that you can actually shut them down. I mean, I only see this being in an extreme case, not to be taken lightly, but it does give us that ability that you can shut them down. Any discussion or questions?
Do we have the public hearing?
No.
This is, this is just a business.
A public hearing required.
Just need to watch out.
Yep. Second, please vote. Motion carries four oh. Next on the agenda is streets, Almond Hill and Elm Street. And I hate Louis sitting here because it's one of the streets he complains throws him out of the truck every morning, but. But those, we've got some bids in here and all that, you going to handle it, Phil?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. We're going to fix Louis's problem hopefully here. Purpose of this item is to report a quote on resurfacing Almond Hill Street and Elm Street. These streets have been identified as streets that are due for resurfacing. Triple Gap Road will soon be resurfaced as part of an ongoing project of the Department of Utilities. This would be a good time to address these two feeder streets as well. Last June, the city bid out asphalt resurfacing for the next calendar year. That bid was awarded to Jasper Grading. The quote for Almond Hill and Elm Street is consistent with that quote from last June. It's my recommendation that we move forward with this resurfacing project at the quoted price as soon as the current school year is complete. And just want to remind you that the cost associated with this project will be covered under SPOLOX 7 funds, so this won't have any impact on this year's operating budget.
Have any questions, discussion? And I'll say that the roads have been cut, cut and filled in places, they have some pretty good dips. They are heavily traveled. The Markins are not very good to say they're there as being generous.
And these quotes include restriping those streets as well, so.
And then with us resurfacing Pilgrim or Triple Gap, you know, that kind of all falls in right there.
Oh, yeah, that's like an update on the SPOLOX, older SPOLOX. How much we have, what projects, those before.
We can get, we can get that for you. Yep. Sure.
I've seen it. Many times. I can quote them to the penny, what do you want me to do? Five million, 188,322.
Is it things that we could sit around and eat like this and figure out which ones are priority now as opposed to when they're proposed, or is it how you have to do it?
No, I mean, when it comes to streets, we already kind of have a priority list on that. Jason works every year on the street index and each street is given a grade on, you know, when it needs to be resurfaced. And we try to fall in line with that. As you remember, we're getting, we're working on a quote for Hickory Ridge right now. It's a much bigger and more complex job than just simply resurfacing, so we had to bid it out. We'll have those bids later this month. So probably by the next work session, we should be able to move on that hopefully. But, yeah, we're kind of in a way already doing that, but I'll be able to get that for you if you want it.
I guess my thought was sometimes projects like that, the town, they seem to have priority, put on the list, and then things change.
The way it works is, like for that, it's, like this stuff, it's for roads. It's not specific to, oh, you're going to resurface Elm Street.
Right.
It's for roads, so.
It's continuing, right?
Yes, SPOLOX 7 is only for road improvements, bridges, sidewalks. There's also some recreation money involved in it too, and that's all you can spend that on.
Yeah, they're not specific to a certain street or something like that. Any other discussion?
You said, who were the companies, what were the companies?
It was Jasper Grading, they were the ones.
So you recommended?
Yeah.
Who was the, who, who bid it originally?
Last year when we bid that out, it was Jasper Grading, and there was three or four. Do you remember the other contractors, Jason?
They've got the, they won the bid for a year for resurfacing.
Gotcha.
So that part had already been bid out.
And you said Triple Gap will have to be bid out?
Triple Gap will be resurfaced under a utilities project. It'll be separate from the general fund or SPOLOX. It's coming up. John, that'll be later this year, I imagine.
That's where they're running the water line down the other road.
I've gotten three or four people asking me already if they're getting, if it's getting resurfaced.
These two roads are in pretty bad shape right now. I mean, when you look at them, you can tell when they redo Triple Gap, they're really going to look bad because they're feeder roads to Triple Gap, so, yeah. It'd be a good time to go ahead and get them knocked out.
Right.
I have a motion. Second, please vote. Motion carries four oh. Next is utilities, the gates at Castleberry Detention Ponds.
So the gates at Castleberry Detention Pond, this is a picture. The lies and wrong voices, the conviction, you see that? Gates at Castleberry E Detention Pond. So this is a detention pond that's in this subdivision, the gates at Castleberry. This subdivision is built out, there are homes here. I just touched the screen, it's touched. There we go. So this detention pond was conveyed to the city really in error about 2007. And the economy dipped and there was nothing we could do about it during that period of time. And now we've cleaned it out, we brought it up to spec, and the developers agreed to take it back. So what we're asking is for permission for the mayor to sign a quitclaim deed to give that detention pond back to the developer so that it will conform to all the other subdivisions that we have, the subdivision HOA, maintaining that detention pond perpetually into the future. So I want to defer to Kevin Talan to our term, city attorney, so he can describe it further.
Sure, the, I mean, the quit pro quo is here, they're going to take on the maintenance of the detention pond. Right now, that's not obligation of us because we own it. We don't want to own it anymore. So the quit pro quo, how you, you know, how we get around, you know, the golf ball at various points this year, some of the gratuities clause, how we get around that is, they are signing our standard agreement that requires them to take on that responsibility so that we no longer have to do it. And then they'll be, they'll own their detention pond again, just like every other.
Why did we own it in the first place?
It was mistaken the grant that kills.
How do we go do it?
It's the goatee.
We might have been offered the.
Kevin's goatee.
We might have been offered a cutting review.
Mayor, Council, one of the things that y'all voted on was to put up a fence and to cling the thing out, so we did that earlier this year. So that was one of the ways that we convinced them to take it back over.
We brought it up to spec. We did our job to bring it up to spec before we did it back over. Now it's their job to maintain it.
So please vote to give it back to them.
How much did we spend to get it up to par?
We did that earlier this year.
It was about 30, in the 30s, 30 something thousand dollars.
We inherited that. So to have a motion to give them back the detention pond.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh.
Thank you, Mayor Kell.
Next item, number two, bid results for a service truck.
So this is asking for two separate service trucks. This is an F-550 four-wheel drive diesel truck with a service body in the back. It looks kind of like this. We have budgeted for two of them. We actually budgeted for a 750 and a 550. We determined that really our two 550s need to be replaced worse than the 750. So we opted, it's cheaper to buy these two than the 750, obviously. But, so we're asking to buy two of these. Low bid came from Wade Ford in the amount of $59,516. And so we recommend accepting the lowest bid from that group.
Any discussion?
Two of these at that price?
It is, two of them.
Are they identical?
They are.
And that's each, that's not two for. I wish.
Can we get four?
No, 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 no.
Each.
Each is $59,000.
That's why I was clarifying.
So is it a dog? $59,000 apiece. Yeah.
Any other discussion? I have a motion.
I'll make a motion, we purchased the F-550s. From my Wade Ford.
Please vote. Motion carries four oh. You're going to bring it up when we buy that Dodge, so.
It's going to be tough.
Next is number three, video proposal, Havercham sewer lines.
Yes, we're requesting to video inspect the Havercham subdivision sewer line. We had two proposals, one from Harmon Pike at 80 cents a foot. One was from Talan Construction, so we've reckoned in going with a low bid. Harmon Pike versus Talan Sewer.
Well, to inspect, how big or round are the pipes?
Most of them are eight inch in that area.
Oh, so we couldn't send Chad down there for 75. Get you a little side job, everybody, but you're going to fit an eight inch ring.
We just checking the volume of this.
Yeah, we also have some pictures of what we've done so far. Here are some of the ones.
Yeah, the ones on the ride are good.
Brakes and things like that. So we need to have a, like a video record of what's going on in those lines. And some of them will need to be replaced, so that'll help us, you know, determine what needs to be replaced in the future.
And so when they do that, it's, you're able to know that, okay, from this point, 57 feet down, there's a roof going through it.
That's right.
It tracks and tells you.
It really is detailed and it's going to give us a lot of detailed information.
How many feet of line?
We're probably looking at about $35,000, basically. Oh, 35,000. So it's less, 80 cents times that is less.
So, so we're buying this, this equipment?
No, sir, we're hiring a contractor to go do it. In the future, we may ask you about that a couple of years down the road, but currently, we're just going to hire a contractor to do it.
So it's cost $66,000 for someone to shoot a camera down a pipe?
What is it?
About 27,000.
27, I'm sorry.
That's Talan's, we got 80 cents on it.
It's 80 cents, 35,000.
Oh, I got you, I got you. Oh, I see, I see, I see, I'm looking up the.
Now Talan's quote's got camera and cleaning.
Oh, that's right, that's right. It would be, that, in essence, we're not going to jet the lines, we're just going to camera them.
Gotcha.
That's cleaning.
Jetting is a lot cleaning, so you have like a high-pressure jetter, go down the sewer line, clean all the gunk out.
I was just going to say, I've earned that money, you might be able to buy your own system.
That's cleaning it too, but then it's also less.
Right. That's it, that's what I was saying. That kind of money we can buy our own. But I didn't know they're, they're doing the whole, all the work.
Those are quite expensive pieces of equipment.
You're looking at 80% of 33,000.
Clean your face, yes.
27,000, something like that.
Yeah.
In the ballpark. Any other questions? I have a motion that we camera the lines.
Make a motion, we camera the lines.
Second.
Second, please vote. Motion carries four oh.
Thank you, Mayor Kell.
Next is number four, bid results for 2 million. Next is number four, bid results for two million gallon elevated water tank.
Yes, sir, we have three bids and we recommend going with a low bid from Phoenix Fabricators in the amount of, oh, no, sorry. Four million, nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, ninety thousand, excuse me, four million, nine hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred dollars.
And have we dealt with them in the past?
We have not, but they have given us references and we've called all of them, they give them, they all give good remarks for them.
And they've all used them in the past? And where are they located at?
They're located in Kentucky. Corporate headquarters is A-Mon, D-M, and we have a facility option that we got in series from back. So they've had, we've called multiple references and they've all given them good remarks.
And this is the tank on the side of four hundred?
It is, it's a two million gallon tank. It looks something like one of those.
And does the price include whatever logos on the side?
It does, whatever logo the mayor Kempson chooses to replace on that tank.
Which one you want?
He could do the fair logo, we do that too.
We got a letter.
Can y'all paint that, Linda? Can y'all, y'all can't do that?
I used to do that, I was sweating water.
Y'all paint it before they put it up there, right?
One of my nephews asked me if I changed the light bulb on top of all of them, and I said, no, I'm afraid of heights. I couldn't paint that logo, it'd be, it'd be something else.
Sean, we got a letter from one of the higher bidders questioning the experience of Phoenix Fabricators. Do you feel comfortable?
I do, just from calling the references, our engineers all have had the references and we've spoken with the actual folks there and think it's enough of a company. Their ability to produce what they say they can do.
Have any discussion? Have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the low bid.
Sir, do I have an opportunity to speak?
Uh, no, sir.
Sir?
No, sir.
I'm sorry, I can't, we're here and there.
No, sir.
I cannot. But I did send the information.
And each council member has, has had that to look over.
All right. I respect your decision.
Motion by Christopher. Second. Second, please vote. Motion carries five-oh.
Thank you, Mayor Kemp.
Four-oh, I'm sorry, I forgot Louis. Announcements, National Day of Prayer events on May third at ten a.m. at the courthouse. Food Truck Fridays, the first event will be this Friday, May the fourth, from five to nine on School Street. Always a bridesmaid, a comedy from May tenth to the twentieth at the Playhouse. At eight o'clock, Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, and three p.m. on Sundays. That's it for this work session, except for executive session. We have things to discuss pending the lease.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Second. Thanks, everyone, for coming. No, motion carries four-oh, sorry.